Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Crestwood Board of Education Study Session, our special meeting where we will conduct interviews for our vacant school board seat. And we will start the interviews now. Kristen, can you please bring in Mr. Billy Amon? Oh, we need a roll call vote, Madam Secretary? A roll call.
Yep. Mrs. Berry is absent.
Mrs. Berry contacted me and let me know she couldn't make tonight's meeting.
Okay. Mr. Baydun?
Here.
Ms. Elzayat?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Myself, Mr. Seba.
Here.
Chairman of the Board.
Perfect. So we'll start off, we have two candidates interviewing today. First, we'll interview Mr. Billy Seba, then we'll interview-
Billy Amon?
Billy Amon, sorry. We don't want Billy Seba, no, I'm just joking. Then Nerissa Ayoub.
Glad you caught that, because I don't know, it just totally went over my head.
I'll call him in.
Yes, please. We're ready.
So are we just going in any particular order, or what are we doing? Are you just asking all of the questions, Danielle?
What's that?
Are you just asking all of the questions?
Um, yeah, you guys wanna-
I'm just wondering, sometimes they take turns, sometimes you can ask all of them, it's fine with me.
She should wait.
Yeah.
That, it's a, I mean, the interviews are public, so she can come in. Yes. Mr. Amon, how are you?
How's everybody?
Great, great. Thank you for putting in your application. We have 11 questions for you tonight, so I'm just gonna ask you the questions and you'll answer them.
Let's go.
Good?
Sounds good.
Um, alright. So, please briefly tell us about yourself, highlighting your involvement with the activities of the Crestwood Schools, and specific areas that would help us gain knowledge regarding your candidacy.
Okay, so my name's Bilal Amon. I go by Billy to a lot of the community. I've been involved in the community for over 21 years through an organization I started with my friend called Hype Athletics, which we would do programs for kids such as athletics, education, social services. I've been involved in the Crestwood area for about eight years coaching football. I've been living in Dearborn Heights for 12 years, and I've been living in the Crestwood District for the last five. Been involved in many different political things with the community. I'm a very big activist for my community, for my youth, a lot of coaching through Hype with basketball. Also do mentoring. We set up educational programs, social service programs, like I said before, and also substance abuse programs for the kids in the community. So I've always been an advocate for, for the youth.
Great, thank you. What contribution can you make to the school district?
So the contribution I can make to the school district is bringing my strengths with me as far as working, the work that I've done with youths and their families. I've been a big advocate for social services, substance abuse, and education. A lot of my strengths are working with kids and their families closely, like I've been doing for the last 20 years, and also the support that I have with many community leaders and community organizations.
Great, thank you. What do you believe is the greatest challenge facing the Crestwood School District?
So the greatest challenge, when you say greatest challenge facing the district, is, I'd have to be sitting on your side to see that first. I know that many districts face a lot of challenges these days. And with the strengths that I see on our board already, and the direction that we've been moving in for the last three years, I feel that whatever happens, or whatever issues arise within our district, that we'd be able to take them on head-on.
Because of the issues we deal with, confidentiality is a requirement. How would you safeguard the confidential business of the district?
So it's a lot of the work that I do, for example, I run, I'm part of a program called SAFE, which is Substance Abuse Program, which is all about confidentiality. So I know about the way the confidentiality agreements and other things work when it comes to meetings, and a lot of the things that I do with the families and their youth that are private. Also with the work that I do through Hype, being the COO, there's a lot of meetings that we have with county, state officials that we have to keep confidential. So I've been through this for the last 20 years, and understanding the way that confidentiality works, especially with laws, I'm pretty well-versed in it.
Thank you. What experience have you had in working with diverse persons, students, or families, including other ethnic groups and exceptional children?
So in '07, I used to work for the Public Schools with the Special Needs Department. When I, when we built our facility in Hype, we started bringing over the kids with special needs to the facility that we work with now, with, through a classroom where we do different programs with them, helping them get through a social, working as far as being social and jobs going through MRS and STEPS. So doing what I do at work, when it comes to working with kids with special needs, I have that on my side. Also, a lot of the work we do with Hype is throughout Wayne County, all 43 cities in Wayne County. So we work with a lot of different diverse and ethnic groups. We're always out in the community, helping feed families, take care of families, no matter what age, race, religion. And we were actually founded on the basis of, no matter what race, religion, origin, background, we all came together in one thing, which was sports and athletics, which led us to our other programs, which is education and mentoring.
Thank you. What approach would you take to helping pass millage renewals, millage increases, or other elections?
So again, with the work that I do through Hype and through organizations that I work with, I'd be vocal about it. I'd be able to reach out to people in the community and speak to them, be able to reach out to different organizations. A lot of people have my contact in the community, so it's easier for me to go out and speak to them since I'm with them on a daily basis. So I'm sitting with parents every day. If it's coaching at Crestwood, or when I'm at Hype, I'm close to having seven, 800 kids in the building at a time, which I'm dealing with a lot of their parents and speaking with a lot of them as well. So I'm always open, I'm always there for people to call, ask questions to, and I'm always open to the fact of going to these organizations, sitting down, speaking with them, and letting them know how we feel and what we need to pass these bonds and millages.
Thank you. If cuts in programs for kids became necessary for financial reasons, what would you cut?
So again, in my position with the work I do, when it comes to budgeting and cuts, we sit back and we look at every single program. I wouldn't just cut one program or cut from certain programs. We'd have to sit back and look at it as a whole. If we can take little from each program to help succeed and move forward, then that's what we would have to do. I'm not one that would like, that looks to cut a program completely, because sometimes some kids depend on those programs and enjoy those programs, and you wouldn't want to take away from that. And at the end of the day, it's all about the kids, so we would have to do what's best for them.
Thank you. At times, you will be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you are required to uphold as a board member. How will you handle this?
My personal point of view, when it comes to law, means nothing. Everybody in this world is allowed to a personal point of view, but when it comes down to the law, we have to follow the law. And at the end of the day, it isn't about my personal point of view, it's about what's best for the kids and what's best for this community.
Thank you. How will you schedule, how will your schedule fit with the meeting schedule of the Board of Education?
Well, what's good about my schedule is I can make it on my own. So I usually, I'm out of work by 3, 4 o'clock, so whatever, even if there's something during the day, I can, you know, adjust my schedule accordingly.
Great. And what is the role of a school board member?
I believe the role of a school board member is to focus on the future of our kids, to make sure that our district is running and doing a great job, to make sure that our teachers are happy, and our students are thriving and learning, and moving forward and becoming the best leaders that they can be.
Sorry, I'm just taking notes.
No problem.
And why do you want to serve on the school board?
I like to serve on the school board because, you know, with the work that I do with the kids, I look at it as, these kids are always looking for somebody to look out for them. They have their parents who are their heroes, their role models, their mentors, but they're always looking for somebody who's gonna take that extra step. You know, as a coach, I work with these kids on a daily basis, not even on the football field, but also off the football field. Whether it's helping them at night, getting a phone call from one of them, looking for advice. Also, when I'm at Hype, working with kids who just are looking for somebody to talk to. You know, I'm always there to guide them and help them. I'm always there to make sure that the next step is gonna be there for them. Reason I want to be on this board is I want to help build the future. I want to help make sure that our district is going in the right direction, like it has been for the last three years, but I want to make sure that we're pushing forward for the future. You know, I have my kids now, I have my son, who hopefully in the next couple of years will be in our district. And I want to make sure that he has the best that he had, that he can have. Because, like I tell my, like I tell all my players, whether it's at Hype or Crestwood, I always tell them, you're the next step. That I have a child that's gonna be growing up in this community, I want to make sure that when they grow up, they have you to look up to as well. And being on this board will help me make that happen.
Okay, Mr. Amon, those are all the questions that we have for you. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't. I thank you guys for having me here today.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. We appreciate it. Kristen, can you please bring in Nerissa Ayoub? But at least he turned it off. He turned it off. Yeah. Well, it's gonna be, but it's not blowing on us anymore.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, Nerissa, we have 11 questions for you, so we'll start asking as soon as you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, great. Briefly tell us about yourself, highlighting your involvement with the activities of the Crestwood Schools, and any specific areas that would help us gain knowledge regarding your candidacy.
So I'm a 2015 graduate of the district. I've been in the district since 2002, so I've been in Crestwood Schools ever since kindergarten. I started at Highview, then Riverside. I had very many Newspaper Club meetings in this library, so it's nice to be back. And from there, I went on to graduate from the University of Michigan Dearborn, with degrees in psychology, political science, and applied art. And immediately after undergrad, I graduated from law school, or I went to law school and graduated this year. I just took the bar exam. I have experience in criminal law, family law, immigration, civil rights, property, and local government. While in undergrad, I was camp counselor at the American Legion Auxiliary Michigan Girl State. It's an all-girls government camp that was afforded to me by the Crestwood School District. And I was a counselor for three years. Many of my girls were from Crestwood. And during my senior year of undergrad, I was involved in a nonprofit organization called Heal Move Shift, where we advocated for the physical, mental, and nutritional health of students. Our pilot program was in Crestwood. We focused on freshmen, and we did seminars regarding yoga, art therapy, substance use, and nutritional health.
Wow, great, thank you. What contribution can you make to the school district?
I think my legal background serves very well. I just graduated from law school, so I still have some things fresh in my mind before I get too pigeonholed into a certain practice area. And as a recent graduate, I feel like I have a little bit more insight as to what the students are facing. And I'd like to, you know, kind of be a voice for that.
Sorry, I'm just taking notes.
No, do what you have to do.
What do you believe is the greatest challenge facing the Crestwood School District?
I think alternate avenues for success. At least when I was in high school, advanced placement was a very big thing that was being pushed on to us, and there was a mentality, at least when I was a senior, that was Ann Arbor bust, and your value was more or less whether you were able to get into U of M or not. And so I want students to know that their value isn't dependent on where they go to college, if they go to college at all. Most of my family didn't end up going to college, but they're very successful otherwise. So I want students to understand that, well, college is incredible, and it's awarded me personally so many opportunities, that it's not the end all be all.
Because of the issues we deal with, confidentiality is a requirement. How would you safeguard the confidential business of the district?
The same way I would with a client in my legal capacity. Ethics is very much so taught in law schools, and we had to take an ethics exam in order to get our license, which I have passed. So I would just treat it the same way I would any other scenario.
What experiences have you had in working with diverse persons, students, or families, including other ethnic groups and exceptional children?
I think my time at Girl State really afforded it to me. If you put 300 teenage girls in the same place, disasters are bound to happen. And so I've been able to understand the backgrounds of these girls and try to navigate the situations that they find themselves in throughout the week. When I worked at Access, we had a health policy program where we collaborated with multiple other ethnic nonprofits from every group that you could possibly think of. So I did learn a lot from that experience.
What approach would you take to helping pass millage renewals, millage increases, or other elections?
So I do have six years' worth of campaign experience, and I like to think that was relatively successful. So I would treat it the same way as I would the last few years that I've been doing this. And I also think as far as millages go, people want to know exactly where their money is going, and so helping people understand exactly what's going on with their taxpayer dollars if we're asking them to take an increase on their property taxes.
If cuts in programs for kids became necessary for financial reasons, what would you cut?
I hate to give the lawyer answer, but it depends. I think that's a very situational type of question, and prior to anything, I would like try to find creative solutions to maybe rearrange the budget before I try to cut any one specific program.
At times, you will be caught between legitimately opposing points of view. There may be a difference between your personal point of view and the policy or law that you are required to uphold as a board member. How will you handle this?
Upon graduating law school, there have been many laws that I don't necessarily agree with, but as an officer of the court, it's still my duty to uphold the law and not try to go around it or change it in a way that's not proper. Procedure means a lot to me, and even if I don't particularly like or agree with something, I know what's right, and I know how to uphold the law.
How will your schedule fit with the meeting schedule of the Board of Education?
This would take priority to me, so I would ensure that every other Monday evening at 6:00 PM, 5:30 PM would be open for me.
Thank you. What is the role of a school board member?
This is gonna sound a little bit cliche, but the students should need to come first. This is why I think all of you are here, this is why I am here, why most other people are here, is because they care about the district and care about the children. We are the change that we wish to see in the world, and I hate using that silly little quote, but, you know, having been through the district and seeing things that I want to change, and seeing things that I'm sure you all wanted to change when you first showed an interest in the school board, making things more accessible to kids, ensuring their success, and creating well-rounded members of the community once they leave should be the priority of a school board member.
And finally, why do you want to serve on the school board?
I've thought about the school board for a very long time. The timing just wasn't right for me. I was still in undergrad, or law school, or, you know, pick your favorite college excuse. But now things have kind of aligned to where I can give this the full attention that it needs, and, you know, it just wasn't the right time for me yet. And so I do care about the kids, and I do care about the district, and I've always cared, and I think now is the right time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the questions we have for you. Do you have any for us?
No, just thank you all very much, and I would like to acknowledge Sue's contributions to the board while she was here, and just thank her for the service that she gave during her tenure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I will open it up to our board members, if they have any comments or anything they wish to say.
Just that, just Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Seba.
This is a great problem to have, you know.
I agree.
Two people that presented themselves very well with two different backgrounds, obviously, different dynamics, and what they could bring to the board.
I agree. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Baydun?
I also mimic Trustee Seba's comments. I believe it's definitely a good problem to have. Very different backgrounds, community service background, and also a legal background. It's great. And I applaud both candidates, definitely. Whichever way the board chooses to go, I still think this is, there's no, I would say winner and loser in this. I think the district continuously is gonna be a winner, because there's people out there like Mr. Amon and Ms. Ayoub that want to help.
I'll go next. I would thank both candidates, and like they both said, extremely different backgrounds. I like that one has a lot of education, where the other one has a lot more experience, I guess, life and experience, kid experience, but the other one has a lot of education, I mean, very impressive background. So yes, very, very difficult.
Agreed. Student, did you have anything to say?
There really isn't much else to say. I think, I know both of them personally as well, and I think that it's definitely going to, we can't go wrong either way. They are both, as everyone said, two different backgrounds, but both are committed to the community, to the, to the kids, and, yeah, it's like, like Trustee Seba said, it's a, it's a good problem to have. And I want to thank both of them and their families for coming out to support them.
I agree. And I will, at this time, ask for, so I mistakenly skipped over approving the agenda for this special meeting, so before we go any further, because I realize that at this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this special meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Seba. Can I get a second?
Support.
Thank you. So it is recommended by Mr. Seba and supported by Mr. Baydun at the Board of Education. Approval is recommended for the items listed on the October 10, 2022 special meeting board agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Glad that was a first.
Sorry about that. Okay. So at this time, I will open up the floor for any recommended action regarding our two interviewees.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Seba.
Like I said, I, this is a very difficult thing for me to, to pick a name or not, honestly. Wish we had the ability to bring on an extra person, but we don't. Sorry. I have, I'm all about education, and I think that is a key component to everything we do, and I'm gonna give a little lecture before I make my nomination, so please bear with me. But I'm also about experience, too. So I move, I, I move that we nominate Billy Amon to fill the vacant seat left by Ms. Sue Kaminsky. Support.
Okay. We have a recommended action. It is recommended that the Crestwood Board of Education fill our vacant seat with Mr. Billy Amon, Bilal Amon, I'm sorry, with Mr. Bilal Amon on, fill the seat on the Crestwood Board of Education until November 7th, 2023, which just means that if appointed, he will run again for his seat. So any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think on this one, you need specific.
You need specific, you need, uh-
Okay, Madam Secretary, can we get a roll call then?
Berry's absent. Mr. Baydun?
Aye.
Ms. Elzayat?
I didn't get that.
Sorry. Wasn't talking to you, Siri.
That was Siri, not me.
Sorry.
Can we start again?
Yes. Mr. Baydun?
Aye.
Ms. Elzayat?
Yes.
Ms. Fawaz?
Um, yeah, this really was hard. Yes.
Okay, myself, yes, Mr. Seba.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Mr. Amon is our new school board member. Kristen, can you please-
But can you please make sure that it's not, this is not a vote against Nerissa in any way, honestly, because-
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't think anybody's taking it like that.
Yeah, I just, well, I mean, listen, I said it earlier, I'll say it again. She's just remarkable. She really is, but, and I, you know, I think Mr. Amon is too. So I just want to make sure that she realizes that this is not a vote against her. It is more a vote for Billy, for Mr. Bilal Amon, that's all.
I think it takes a lot to come out, and I think a lot of us know.
You know, what made me proud is the job, is that she is a Crestwood fellow, and look, look at-
I respect both of them.
Absolutely.
Like, a tremendous amount, and I think it takes a lot coming in here. We all know, but.
Um, I, I think you can bring both in.
Do.
No, it's a public meeting.
No, I'm saying, we're even.
We need to think.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so. So we wanted to thank you both for coming in so much. This was a very difficult decision. Mr. Seba made a great point earlier, and he said that, you know, this is a great problem to have, because we have two perfect candidates standing in front of us. However, the board did decide to go with Mr. Billy Amon, so Billy, congratulations. Nerissa, we wanted to thank you so much for coming forward. We appreciate the fact that you are a Crestwood graduate, and we hope if a seat ever comes open, that you would consider this again.
Absolutely.
You did an amazing job.
This is what I was gonna say.
Yeah, and this is, this is something that, you know, is, again, I will take Mr. Seba's words. He said, "This is not a vote against you," which I agree with. This is just a vote in favor for Billy. Yeah, so thank you very, very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Amon, congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
So at this time, I will take a motion to adjourn our special meeting.
So moved. Support?
Madam Chair?
Um-
No, we're gonna do the oath of office. We have to do the oath.
Not yet.
We have to do the oath of office.
Okay, can we vote on the adjournment?
No, we're not adjourned.
You're not adjourned.
I thought we'd do that at the other one.
The German, it has to be. So, Madam Chair?
I don't-
We need to adjust our-
Hold on.
Our motion.
I, I-
Okay, that's okay. You can just present your-
I present the, uh-
I present it. Okay, so now we'll do the oath of office, and it'll be administered by our secretary. Do you have it?
Yep.
The oath? Oh, you pointed, you pointed.
No, no, I know I have it, but I, I- Oh, Mr. Billy Amon, you can just hold on a second while I find the oath. I just had it. Here it is.
It was here.
So, you can raise your hand. So, I, Billy Amon-
I, Billy Amon.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support-
Or affirm that I will support-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the, and the Constitution of this, of this state-
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of member of the Board of Education of Crestwood School District.
Of the office?
Of member- Of member.
Of member of the Board of Education of this Crestwood School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And then your acceptance?
I do hereby accept the office of member of School Board of Education of Crestwood School District in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, on this 10th day of October 2022.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Billy. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Yes. Well, no, for the, for the regular meeting, he does. Yeah.
Madam Chair.
So.
I was gonna.
So, Mr. Ayman, if you would like, and if you are prepared to today, we have a meeting at 7:00 PM, a regular school board meeting today, at 7:00 PM, and we would like you to join us if you're able. Thank you. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Public comments, if anybody wanted to say anything, board comments.
So we do have public comments, Kristen? I think somebody.
Did anybody fill out a card?
You have a comment?
Mr. Bedun, would you like to fill out a card before you make your public comment?
Madam Chair, I just want to be very brief, if that's okay with you.
I'm, I'm sorry.
For all that you're doing.
Well, you need to fill out a card to say that.
Okay.
However, we appreciate your sentiment, Mr. Bedun. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Board comments?
Salwa, board comments? Like to thank both candidates again. And again, both very impressive, especially, I mean, your resume was very impressive with your education, really like that. And then Billy with all of his experience. So we thank you for coming out today. And also, I have to say, my daughter Miriam's birthday is this week, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday, happy birthday, Miriam.
Mr. Bedun?
First of all, I know I said it earlier. I do want to say thank you, Bilal Ayman, and thank you, Nerissa. I know I've never met you before, but your five minutes of fame is going to stick in my head, and I honestly believe that you're just paving your way. And hopefully, in the future, you can help us.
Mr. Janun?
You guys, okay, so they, they started that way this time, but, so, you know, I know it takes a lot, you know, Nerissa to come up here, Bilal to come up here, and it's, I'm happy to see that we had two good candidates, you know, join us, because it isn't always the case. And so I respect both of you guys, you know, a tremendous amount, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I know we're not, you know, it's not the last we'll see of you.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll go a step above, forgive me for, but I think great candidates is a, is a better word. Mr. Ayman, congratulations. Ms. Ayub, I truly, truly hope you mean what you say when you say that you are a part of this community and will not, that we'll see you again, because this is exactly what this community needs, I think, in the long run. You know, you, as, as I have learned over the years, my education helped me, my experience took me to the next level. And that is just time, you know, and you're, you're so on the right track. Everybody that's been a part of your success should be very proud, and you should be most proud of all your hard work. So as I said earlier, honestly, not a vote against you at all. It's just a vote for Billy and, and some of the things that I think can help this board at this time. But I wanted to specifically address you because I think that I, I do look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. Does everybody else, Billy is my second-year candidate. Aren't we all?
Runs in the fair.
I didn't know that.
So I'm, if I was to lose to anybody, I'm happy if I lost to Billy.
You didn't. You didn't lose, I promise you.
I'm happy that he lost. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And as usual, this seat always goes last for board comments, so there isn't much that I can say that anybody hasn't. Although I will agree with sentiments, Billy, congratulations. I'm so happy that you're here. I know you're going to help us do amazing things. And Nerissa, I know that we will definitely be hearing your name many, 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 many times to come in the future. So thank you very much. Now, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair. Support.
Thank you. It is moved by Mr. Sabo and supported by Mr. Bedun that we adjourn the special board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:14 PM.